From my phone from the income. And I'll just hold it on while I bring them again. Better number of how the reduction. Much better. The link over there. Small, like in the way now it's perhaps. So. But I don't need to. Also, that's what I'm going to say. So it's probably been one small. Right. Yes. Let's think of smaller. The other bit makes me sure that we're trying. So our materials. Large. Which they look like. Yes. I don't get. Uh. Part. You're not done. Let's just. Where British is gone. And then more than that. But those over. Uh. The national. Forty five one seven. Yeah, we were. You know, I'm going to be able to. Attention with the Monday Meredith now at Texas earlier today. You know. Now we could stop. So we're saying about. So I guess. Okay. So we'll go ahead and set up a clock. And after we will call me to order and ask for. All the world.
House set.
Your.
Baby Briscoe.
Here.
Mary Collins. Here. Bill Heisen. And the ones.
Yeah.
Eddie Kane.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Last stand. Ladies. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party stands. One nation. On a. That's what. That's all. Okay. Uh. I do not choose to approve on the agenda. But one thing. If we're going down to item seven E. Uh, Mr. Bison would like to also talk about the bills tax. And so talk about transit, often see facts. Can we add needles tax to that? In our discussion. And then we just go ahead and approve the agenda. Now, big word of financial report for the year 2024. We're motion to approve the regular beauty.
So.
And say. On whatever. How about that? Moving on to public forum. Stiller, you got anything you want to bring to us tonight?
Okay, fine. Here you.
Yes. Jack, you got anything? All right, we'll move on then. Only thing to add in what uh. My report uh from last week is that. Spain and Spain, my wife and I all attended the grand opening of the. Tiger locations, quite festive event. They had cars everywhere, must have two hundred people there. And uh, through the way car wash is. So. Uh, finally caught up with the uh lady from their marketing division. And we did only email back and forth and text a bunch of times, but. Tiger is committed to doing whatever they can do down here to the. That's at both parties. So they're they're really interested in getting involved. You know, first ever meeting. Then we had that's committee meeting the other afternoon and. Continue to talk about that to the festival. Why and. Sure. Parody will. I will stop that meeting when we have a workshop committees. So that was all mine. Uh. Staff report, do you have something to say at this time?
Yes, I will make sure that uh we'll just quickly hit all the topics on. The town administrator report will think it'd be kind of useful. To answer some questions. Um, so. I left the May thirteen work session uh. With an impression that I didn't have an opportunity to answer some questions for council members. Uh, so I took thirty minutes with almost everyone on council just to ask. Answer any questions they had over the week. So I did that over the three days following thirteen. Um. Beyond that, what I included in the most useful is uh we'll jump into trans occupancy tax. So I just shared a. Revenue quick report uh with all the revenue that came in this year. Um, the end of. Whichever way you look at it, the end or the beginning of this fiscal year. Then the last fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year was a little bit uh. Uh unwieldy uh for staff. So some of that revenue carried over. But to the point, uh small C, very safe. Projections were. You can take a look at one A and. I provided there and staff reports that actually help. About to get to that uh fifteenth uh in revenue. And then if it was increased to uh one by one quote the sixteen point five thousand. Uh, beyond that, I think the most um. Important that I want to reach out to you also for. Follow up on the annual audit for this year twenty two, twenty three. So for clarity, remember that is not. This fiscal year we're running in, previous fiscal year. So we were provided by RC A. Uh draft that I shared out with council members. Uh, well, I shared out a page which is the. The most important page, which is that revenue expense for twenty two, twenty three. That's attachment to A. And then I shared to B, which is the profit and loss reports. From our June twenty twenty three financial reports. Um, I spent the morning on Thursday looking through the expenses. And I could work back the numbers to see if correspond. But Melanie and I sat down and we were having trouble with. The revenue code. Um, as stated in the staff report, it's slightly concerning the quality of work we're doing from our audit. Um. It was recommended to me by the finest Carter also uh. Started exploring other firms and Melanie Porter and I agree with both of them. Um, I think the most useful thing with my limited time. In regards to that is that Bill sent me a few questions or Mr. Heisen sent me a few questions. This afternoon, so I was just going to go over them. Um, so. This. Effectively for D is. It's not, uh, the question was is it planned versus actual? It's a profit and loss for a percent of the budget. But it serves the same function of trying to forecast out what your uh. What your plan budget looks like for that year and then it gives your actuals. So on a June financial statement, you've had twelve months. So you actually want to get modeled in, I should compare that against your June. Any year that it is, is your June financial statement. Uh, second one was uh specifically what was the town for? Fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, what was the town funding line? Which is a hundred and thirty seven thousand. Um, I. Have here. That is the town planning line. So that will various consultant work primarily around the factory that the previous town administrator was doing. Uh, it's all here, but to the point, the recommendation is um. It makes it a little bit unwieldy to track all that. Uh, if you have all these grants and you're on the budget line. Um, as you can see in the next fiscal budget, we only have two brings, sort of fire department, fire department capacity grant. And the uh. Forgot the JAG grants, the police department grant we talked about. And those are in their specific line items where you see the revenue coming in clearly. And then you got an expense line for both of them that are separate, so you can track them clearly. The recommendation I got last year, I've agreed with Melanie who also brought it out. Uh, it makes it much more easier to track, so. Um. Beyond that, uh, you had a question of how was the fire department grant pass through on notice? Um, and I agree with you, Bill. Um. I look at the fiscal year twenty one, twenty twenty one, that was during the previous town treasurer. And we can find that was not dispersed out. Uh, and then for twenty two, twenty three. We had a. Counting error where we essentially can voice back to ourselves, which Melanie found. Um. But to the point, if staff was not able to cash it. It should have been caught first year account staffing. Or even as I put in my staff report, I haven't heard from the volunteer fire department about it. So I called them last week and asked them to check their books to make sure, but uh. I recall, I told them again today, uh, so, because I think that's good news for that.
Yeah, they think that would.
Yeah. They didn't even notice.
Yeah. So. Um, so I talked with Jim Bowden about it essentially, as I stated in the staff report, that. I need to clear up and double check every everything with fire requirement, our books, and then. Um, even still need to do appropriation for that, because appropriation is all arising, so.
Even if it goes back from. Two years or what?
You would appropriate it this year if you wanted to wrap it up. But I've been looking at cash flow.
Yeah.
Uh, beyond the last.
Good question, but sorry. That maybe for some. For summary. What accountability does the law tier required for have to attend? So.
I don't know that they really have any. No, I I don't. We thought we were maybe here on the right track when we invited the fire chief to take part in our discussions and that happened one time and then we haven't seen him again. Um. They're pretty much independent and other than the pass through money that they've been getting. Obviously, our accounts didn't get it, didn't define it. Uh. They helped out the fire department, so. Must not be such a big deal to them over there either.
Yeah.
For being a nonprofit, I think. They've got, you know. Um, a vision, a mission, of course, everybody's out there. But uh, they they still. Uh, have accountability to the community. And so. And they don't. Perform up their expectations. Um. As opposed to taking the risk before. Uh, I'm all candid, but they open. So they have a possibility, there's a question. You know. They're here to serve the community. That's basically it. And follow that on that and. Because when they do.
Who receives them at the time? Or they're being afforded rations? Also.
Well, they're not going to see them. They are not part of that. So they're.
Get them.
Market, so they should probably have a board of volunteers. I actually don't know a lot, but. The meeting, what I'm trying to look.
If they are not part of it, I think they are. They got a board of.
I'm. Total speculation, full assumption, I'm. Assuming that the state has an requirement that it has to go through a relevant, that's why we're a pass through. Um, it probably doesn't. It's not the same situation as nonprofits where a later one will usually be a pass through because. They have. They're looking to run those funds through. Um, usually they have. An audit on there, so Charlottesville usually it's somebody above a million has an audit, have all their checks in the room. They get a national grant and then they do a pass through with the smaller nonprofit. Um. That's been what I've experienced before. This one. I haven't done the details about it, uh, but of course this is all the most permanent to break other council. Um, beyond that, I think Bill had a good question where he's asked about the annual money we get from the county. That is specifically for dam and letting maintenance. Um, from my understanding, I'm trying to find, but. Uh, it wouldn't be too far to say that it was mostly a handshake agreement. Between town and the town. Uh, so there's nothing relevant in regards to how to get that set out. Um. Part of my hopes for next fiscal year is kind of open on conversation on that. Um, I already asked for how they would do that deal because it says it's pretty flat. And uh, it's always worth it to ask, hey, can you update your numbers? So.
Can you check that about children? I think it was, it was still sort of agreement with it. Oh. We have so many kids that go to school, exploit kids and we would be reimbursed for that for some reasons. You know, I I remember that way back, they had something like that. There was some issues, not issues, but discussion of how to use that money. For the children, because it's coming back for the children. So I don't know, I think that was one of the agreements. They kind of had with us, but you can check and see if that's still in operation. Because we probably have thirty, forty, fifty kids or. I think we get a certain amount for each student.
Not sure if it's relevant to this, but it's worth asking if I appropriate that for. Uh, I'm hoping for next year to talk about counting relevant content, especially in the.
Really.
Beyond that, so you had another question, what about the net income? So you'll see on my propping loss. Uh, negative eighty one thousand. So when we flipped into this fiscal year, I pointed out that we were in a really. Um, a really uh less than ideal situation with the transfer over to the SAPP. Um, so for example, as I showed in this report, I received back twenty one thousand. This month from Virginia housing, which was one of those where instead we were working on previous years. Um. I'm on, I'm wrapping up the facilities for anti-police vehicle, which ends up being almost eighty thousand, I think, once we wrap all invoices. Uh, then, as you guys remember, I asked for a permission to. Be a little bit more serious on the liquid meals tax report that I think everybody knows, and that was close to uh. Uh, thirty seven thousands. And they're going to say that during the public meeting. And then um, another important factor is that.
I'm so sorry, will you repeat your last sentence?
Uh, we had that liquid meals tax.
Okay.
Or no, sorry, that little bit business. That was brought up to you guys uh early on in the year, which landed after the fiscal year. Um, and then. For that. Bill's asking about this amount for the school year, total two twenty three, which is the audit. Um, also the appropriation shows forty thousand realized. Revenue that we expected from the T F select. So. Part of my frustration in with Melanie also is that. Uh. We have a lot of moving parts and. Um. The value added of our firm currently that we keep our accounts to the county. Doesn't reflect the needs that we need. With uh two years that were very complicated with a lot of. Federal money coming in and there's a lot of pressure getting done. Uh, so I wanted to bring this up as my first year as treasurer. Next, I clarify. I followed up with the auditors, asking for them to help sit down and explain this. Uh. And clear this up, so I can provide something finalized to you guys.
Yeah, so the profit and losses, so how do you look? What happens to that if you have a lot of losses, is it just for the next year's budget or is it reflected in the?
So there's a difference between what you appropriate in regards to adding expenses. So that's essentially part of the permission. What I, as you can see in the reappropriation, a lot of that spending got carried over to this year and also a lot of the. Uh, revenue reimbursement coming back. So uh, what I need to get is that clarity also. And uh, ramp up this fiscal year, so I'm hoping that. Things that got delayed from last fiscal year come to here, come into this fiscal year. Uh. It's most important thing is not only. That. If you're properly getting an audit, that is quote unquote as Becky said, our report card, but also that we are making sure and careful about appropriations. So I have not said anything without working with you guys on that clearly. Beyond that, um, we had always entertaining in Scottsville. Um, our ladies superintendent let me know the second we delayed that we were having issues with our backup generators. So we have a sleeve gate that we opened. Um, essentially to let water out if we come a backup. Um, we run that gate off of. Our power line and then our backup is the generator, so it's it's sparingly used. But you'd rather use the the generator than having to crank. The big wheel uh over there, gear to to open it up. Um, so we have Carter Machinery show up last Thursday, which goes in the sixteen. Uh, they found a resonance in the generator and that was the issue. Uh, so they were pleading it, uh superintendent uh was able to meet with me there. Uh, run and test the backup generator, but out of his priorities, especially. And I had a deal with him, asking what his priorities were as superintendent. Uh, a replacement of our backup generator was one of his top listed items. Um, it's a holder more than thirty years old, so Carter's been telling us, hey, we're going to start there on our part for it. Um. Beyond that, I'm working because I have a. Of a capital budget, um, the rack got in because the door's old. There's a hole in the door, so I'll try to get the door replaced before the end of the fiscal year. And then uh work my way outwards and words to protect that generator. Um. I have one quote and then I'm working on two others in the next two weeks. On generators, so I can get kind of a label on that. Uh, but as your town administrator, I think this should be a very important priority for us, so I want to bring it up to council also.
And that would come out of capital improvements?
Yeah, so um, the summary on the last two pages show uh changes in our. Budget that I adjusted to try to anticipate, but I'm hoping is going to be the most uh. Appealing vote. Uh. Beyond that, uh, I pretty much cut the fire program faster when Bill's answering some questions I received over email. Um. I think most of it was covered or you read in the in the staff report. So I'll jump to seven A, which is um. Sure. Seven A, I said. Yes.
Right in the bridge.
I can cover that later if you want. Um. But that's a summary of the staff report I sent out to you guys. Um, I'm hoping that the capital line amount that I frankly have in this budget. Uh, would be sufficient to get a generator placed in there. That's it, thank you, castle.
Any questions on what the Faber has developed for this? Move on to committees and. Commissions and. Mr. Maset, you got anything for us? Malcolm New from there. And then about the Frisco. Mr. Mayor, as I've shared last week, the comprehensive plan is the. Focus trying to get. Completed and then. As we speak, there are two final commissioners in the other room and. Lincoln, they are reviewing edits and having a conversation, so this is part of the initiative to move the. Final document forward, so that would be the main things that's happening now and is there something on to?
We're starting now, I saw it, I'm happy, we can take that follow up, depending on how hard it gets, so we'll know that.
Mr. Thank you. The question was Frisco. Sorry.
Very busy with the. Uh, events, we we had a meeting on Tuesday, so uh. Really focusing hard on um. The the canal. Based on the Batto Festival on Fourth of July. Um. I'm waiting to hear back from Rodney Nelson, who's uh. Very exciting, I just found out on Tuesday, the um. What is it, the Virginia's? Canals and Navigation Society, is that what it is, Canals and Navigation Society? Who runs the entire festival, the the week long. Batto Festival from Lynchburg to Richmond. Um. They are going to come out to Scottsville, they have actors, they're going to do a historic reenactment of, you know, a. Canal. Did or Batto coming in. Um. Hopefully, we're getting a sign from him also, that's what I'm waiting to hear back. Um. Getting some music set up, some some bands for both of those events. And then um, I have a meeting, Melody, tomorrow, she had a very good ideas. Most of you probably know one of my. Favorite pet projects this year, I want the uh Canal Basin Square. So we're thinking about having a. I don't know, a craft fair, I guess would be the the best. But just uh. To in August to uh. Be a fundraiser now, Basin Square, so I think you guys had a canal basin square fundraiser last year that worked. Pretty well, I think the town is pretty. Um, dedicated to seeing improvements instead of there, so hopefully that'll work out well. And then we have two in September, so yeah, we got between June and September five. Five events, so it's it's been a little busy and a little crazy. Uh, if anybody. Knows anybody with um. A lot of historic knowledge, for what I'm doing this year, it's just all the committees for, you know, uh. What I what I really need most help on is going to be the Father's Day celebration in September. So if anybody knows anybody who wants to sit down at Father's Day committee.
Can you see what the.
Uh, well, yeah, Laura Holcsey, I I've spoken to and that uh. I did speak to Nancy Gill, she gave you the names of a couple actors, because what we're hoping. Um, one of the the big things with that is that celebration is going to be something along the lines of like our Twilight Tours. But have it, you know, at the bottom, the founding. Fathers, if that's how it were, founding fathers in Scottsville. Um. But apparently, when it was twenty years ago or thirty years ago, last time they did a Father's Day celebration. Where a lot of the actors are still here and a lot of people, you know. Um. So I think I would enjoy it. Was it twenty eighteen, that makes more sense than maybe it was those folks. So she gave me, Nancy gave you the name of the few people to get in touch with about the Founder's Day celebration, so. A lot of moving parts, but I feel like we're going to have some some pretty good festivals this year. I uh. Presented Hollywood some flyers for Batto on Fourth of July. Apparently, I don't have still society that I think that, but those are ready to go to be posted on that. Their sites and everything. Letting people know they're coming off. That's it, what go on? This.
Three questions for this time. This person.
Well, kind of, when we're really met at uh again parks, um but I do want to point out that we do have the park rules up on all kiosks. And uh so the kiosk have maps and park rules, but you know, it's just beginning. You like to get them bigger and better, but uh anyway, at least we have something on there. We discussed the road to the dock and I think that's the the long range plan and the and the dock itself. Uh if we have a directional sign quote, we had money, we could do that. But I do think we could probably afford a sign, a real make our own sign and put it on Park Road Street because that's a private road or town road that we could put the rebound. I just have a public fishing lake there. So maybe probably we could look at this. If we just get a sign for that says D C and A, we just do that ourselves. But the beat out one costs twenty three hundred. So we could pull off on that if we need to. And then the the committee came up with a budget estimate too. So I don't think any of this is, you know, as important as other things, but uh we do have uh you know, thirteen thousand for the parks and uh five thousand, which we have a grant for for now this year. So we have one of our estimates with that and we're gonna meet again at the end of the month. But uh anyway, this is good momentum, good 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 minute. And then with government services, uh I mentioned uh a little bit, but one of the things that which I brought up, they they run over the budget pretty thoroughly and suggested we we you know, max out everything, whether we are, I think already with the uh with the tax for tobacco and tax for emergency, but they, you know, suggested seven percent for uh meals tax. Uh like like Charles now talk about that. I just researched on that too, a little bit about the food stack. Uh and they liked the idea a lot through tax in that nine percent. And also mentioned that increasing the rent for skin and I think we looked into that. And the uh two other items that we had the money available, or I think we do with now we spurred it to have some sidewalk repairs or details. So anyway, that's kind of what we discussed.
Any questions for Mr. Haris?
I have one. Um when you said that you had thirteen thousand for books?
Well, that was estimated what it would cost. Yeah, thirteen thousand, we 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 don't have the two thousand. They have uh they broke it down to fixing the ramp, the kiosks, uh road, uh gravel on the on the lake road and some signs uh and see if we can get a parking spot at the lake. Uh I have handicapped sign down at the lake.
Adding staff.
Yesterday was thirteen nineteen thirteen thousand eight hundred. So but that's uh that's pretty next year will part of it. You know, it's over the course of next year. And then the five thousand sort of levels, which we have, we have all there to that.
Any other questions? This morning.
E P C is probably going to move to some of our meeting schedules since they have so many events, the Batto, Fourth of July, and there'll be uh volunteering in. So uh we'll move to one meeting a month in June, July, and August instead of the five weekly meeting schedule that we have. We reviewed at the last meeting a list of use cases to, we said uh we would use a list of use cases to test the operations plan once examined. So I'm gonna talk about the operations plan for the town, the emergency ops plan. That it would need to be broadened in scope and needs some changes in the potential obstruction. So Chief Percy was going to take the lead on that and we would edit it and redo it. So we're going through some complicated use cases that might test the stress test the ops plan and make sure everything's covered. My question about the uh accountability of that organization into the town dovetails into that. Because they are doing the ops plan, they are taking the lead on the ops plan for the town. If they're taking that and aren't accountable to the town, then where does that leave the town in terms of having to, you know, it needs to be done this year, right? Every five weeks it needs to be redone. Um if we don't have any way to hold them accountable for getting that done, what do we do? So I I'm not sure what the answer to that is. Anybody? I didn't have any thoughts about that. He used to come to meetings, he hasn't come to meetings, he hasn't come to the work session. What are we gonna do?
Can we just not let them take the lead on it?
We can.
I mean, I could create more work for somebody else. But I I think maybe somebody else who's gonna do it would be better than trusting that it's gonna get done and then it doesn't get done exactly.
The meeting we had with Alamo County Representatives uh left me with the impression that um Alamo County takes the lead on that from Scottville to incorporate it into.
I'm proof meeting, so I I can't say I do. We did talk to uh Chief of Brandy and we did make it known that Scottsdale is somewhat absent from their plan. They said they will address that next time, which is five years.
And that's the same thing.
In the meantime, what do we do?
Well, the same thing we tried to do at that meeting was stress the South Door that, you know, the beer was poured over. Then we are the counties.
And it sure be that it would for next time, but we still have a five year deadline on the ops plan that we are accountable for as a town and need to get it done. And if Chief Percy is not paying attention to that or can't pay attention to that, I mean, I have no way. And if he's not attending the meeting, if he's not responding to communications, I have no way of knowing whether that thing is gonna get done or not.
What is the standard of both so far?
Thought the five year ops plan had to be done every five years. Jack, do you know?
No, it's every five years. It's due August this year.
Is it? Is it a state or federal?
I think it's federal, state, and local.
Federal, state, and local? Well, the county does it every five years. We know that, right? And we are part of the county. So I think that's why ours has to be done. And traditionally has not been told and should be told then perhaps. But uh I think that's a separate discussion. Can we show up? Can we show up that?
Yeah, and I I cannot. I'm I'm a big fan of knocking on doors. See many responses to the email. I thought maybe it might be easier if I just made a knock to it.
I can try that. Certainly, I think that's that's valid. But, you know, I think we do need to address the broader question of accountability to the town. They serve the community, which is a great thing. And I I think they do a great job of serving the community. So I have no issue with that. But on the other things with respect to the town, I still think they need to be overlooked.
So we don't know if they have a board, correct? They kind of go with a board, what do you draw?
I would think by law, a nonprofit would have to have a board, correct?
I mean, I I maybe the best step in, you know, in in the big picture is to find out who the board members are and maybe go to the board instead of the chief. And get some questions answered.
Can you help us find that out? I mean, I'm happy to do the legwork too, but um do you know, I don't know if we have anything on top for them or?
I know somebody who might know also. I I know somebody um who's involved with the with the county fire department and he he does um all of the vetting for the volunteers and alcohol. He he would know if the Scottsdale one has.
I'll call Wayne Borner more.
Okay.
Wayne is Tim's there.
Okay.
Wayne sort of going for a bump. He can fire all of them.
Okay.
He would know.
That would be great.
I'll call Wayne for an intervention.
Okay, thank you both for that. Uh additionally, uh we need to go to E P C needs to go to A R B in June. So hopefully we're on that schedule to get guidance on the E nine one one signs. Uh that's still outstanding. We're expecting the grant notification to come in certainly by June, but maybe earlier the end of this month, which is really next week. Uh and then like the cards maybe, um Jack has identified a number of things that he feels that the town could use. And he's pursuing additional grants to try to get uh funding for some of those those. And that's it?
Any questions? Shane got his name worse.
Uh spoke briefly with Chief Brinkens uh last week and at that time, uh he was pretty optimistic about the grant coming through for the the uh the portable science. Of course, it was used too, but you would be happy just to get the one. So if that's the final one, I would go that mountain. I haven't heard that.
I thought when he was saying pretty optimistic that we got it.
I hope it. We did say that we should rebuild it, but at least by the Fourth of July, we had not a good.
He had a list of towns we did, so I'm I'm looking back there. I'll catch you within the next day or two.
And of course, he's uh still the head of the city of the trailer and cone. Something you have to think about now. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Attendant of Illustrator was long by seven and kind of letting you take over. You know, the answers to all these questions.
So so starting with seven A, um I successfully received that one one thousand and six hundred dollars from the Virginia Housing Fiscal Year twenty twenty three Community Impact Marketing Analysis Brands. So that's a lot of spaghetti. That's a jungle. That's a mouthful. Um that is related to uh various frameworks that were various grant projects that were due done on the tire factory. Um the culmination of that was back in November when they had historic designation. So they did some cycling, some traffic studies and research on the historic designation. So it was a standard you uh you take on the expenses and then reimbursement come back.
So this is the reimbursement.
Yeah. So um that's the total amount of that. Between the last two years, we have gotten everything we have spent on that grant back. And a small um indirect cost, so be for your staff or working model. Uh which is kind of standard, but good news, as I just said from the beginning of the fiscal year, these were the things I'm trying to land on. So we have essentially a clean slate for next year with catching up on us.
Um so just taking one at a time. So any questions on our page?
So this is paid out the year before that?
Most of it. So two thirds of it was paid out previous year and then one third landed this year. Yeah, because you could only reimburse it half of it. We paid more than half of it. Uh but I have a lengthy because they were very deep uh detailed. At a point where we were before we were trying to get the full reimbursement. I think the county would spend so.
So where will that money go back into the general fund?
It'll show up as revenue coming in and then it will just go back into the general fund. So it'll show up as a state rate on our financial statements, but it won't show up on those until our main fund. I think it landed about a week a week ago.
Yeah.
There you go, I believe. Um so it's very important. Originally in January twenty fourth, I discussed that this fiscal year's budget included authorization for three long items. Uh which are shared here, canals and squares, exhibit state, Cleveland nature area, and the community development. Um I am uh being very clear that uh if we were to call pull up here on one of those three for uh authorization, which is required uh from the guidance of our council. Uh they wouldn't be officially authorized until June seventeen. Uh and between uh multiple events and uh unexpected uh staff work, I'll put a that on before the end of the year, I'm concerned that I could in good with a good ability, be able to follow up on some of these capital improvements. Uh line items, but I brought this up earlier in staff reports because I wanted to uh as early as possible work on this.
How much is left to spend on each one of the, forgive me?
I just finished. Yeah, so on our on our capital budget, which you can see in the budget, uh we'll see in the original one, we got five thousand for canals and square purpose and then nine thousand for bank clean. And then we got a small amount for we had two thousand this year for farmers market, thousand for the municipal building, five thousand for the pump station, and then nine thousand for for the pumps and two thousand for the street signs. And that was how we got to the original, that and a few other items that we lost, the original sixty three thousand for the. I've been able and been moving on the other items and quotes, trying to get free quotes for everything uh since I feel that's very responsible. But I wanted to give you guys a heads up about what the timeline here looks like.
Is it just go back into the, I mean, it's about a late year to do this stuff, but does it just go back to the general revenue and be some of it next year?
My appropriate, my reappropriation anticipates clearing those out. And then naturally, at the end of the year, that would show up as a surplus of our budget.
Because it would be hard to get that done. It's a couple of years later.
I'm a little bit overwhelmed right now.
Uh I can help you with that. I've done some research. I don't mean to tie you off with this, but it's it ties into what we're saying. I owe a couple emails, but I'm just gonna take this up to you. I apologize to everybody now. I was not in the best state of mind last week when we had our meeting to begin with. I'm embarrassed how I've handled myself. That being said, I've done some research on government budgets. If we promise the taxpayers, and this is what I thought, I I now know this one hundred percent for sure. If we promise the taxpayers, we are gonna spend five thousand dollars of their tax money on bank clean. And we don't spend five thousand dollars of tax money on the increase. It's a formal bond. If we say we are spending five thousand, we are taxing you. Look, we up your meals tax, that tax is coming in. Really use these taxes to improve this town and stuff. And then they say, yeah, let's just have a surplus and put it back into our general fund. That's a huge open book. So I have all four having a public hearing for all three of those and figure, I mean, we can spend that money. We have to spend, we have to spend, we legally have to spend this stuff now. If it's said is that we're gonna spend five thousand, I can always square and we spend four thousand six hundred thirty two. That's not a big bet, but we we can't just say we're not gonna spend it. Let's have some.
And for that, that is why the reappropriation zeros out because I need I need to responsibly have authorization, well, having appropriation that clearly dictates what I expect to take in as revenue and what I expect to be as expenses. Also essentially, we just admitted certain that. So that's why I have zero, but my major concern is that pinch.
Since July first, right?
Next July. My my concern is the pinch on contract jobs and I've seen before that uh there's been concern about being unwieldy and nonchalant with government expenses, which I'll try to avoid with that side. So that's why I brought this up to town council right now.
I think we need to have a public hearing on offering those.
To spend the money to this this year, okay? And then so what you're, if I understand you correctly, Fabier, you're saying to get the free quotes and go through the process to allocate that and get those done within the fiscal year, it's going to be a challenge for you.
Yes.
If you'd like, tomorrow, Melanie and I have a meeting. After that meeting, if you have a little while. After that meeting, if you have a little while, I already have a couple things for that five K canals and square. I don't know what if you want to. But if you'd like to come to the meeting, what we can do is get some quotes and and get them all rolling. And so that on June seventeenth, when we have the public hearing, and you know, it's all ready to go, then on June eighteenth, we can pull the trigger and do it. You know, it's not like we're going to start on June eighth of August. We can maybe pull that trigger. Yeah, we can take that process and do that for you. Can you get, can we spend it in a timeframe, Hobbie?
Essentially, I'm asking for help.
So I think that's what you're hearing, right? Is that they can help and take that off your shoulders? And hopefully, we can get that appropriated and spent before the end of the fiscal year. So I'm upset. I'm going to be at Victory Hall tomorrow. And since I have a lot of ideas for canals and square, and you have a lot of ideas for parks and. If say two fifteen of the two, because I have a meeting with Melanie, but I can just say after the meeting at the two fifteen, the two of you want to come down and vote.
Only one.
But does that count for? So maybe there may be a lot.
I gotta go. Another of those list shows is we have ten thousand dollars for canals. If we have five thousand brand.
So that's. That's wonderful. We believe we're not impressed with that.
But I think.
But if we want to spend it, let's spend it. You know, let's do it all.
Get all that, get all those quotes in because there's probably ten thousand dollars. Fifty pounds of covers.
Well, yeah, we, Hobbie and I took a walk with Melis and the other day between the barrels and the and the, and the, and stuff like that. I think we could add redoing the signage. I would love to redo the Plexiglas and that whole display. I mean, that, I mean, figuring out a way to do ten thousand dollars like canals and square.
Bill mentioned something that I think is very personal, did a recommendation list. I'd like to share it out with you, because I've seen it. It's on the top of my list right now.
I got it right there too, but I figured I'd put it on. Well, and we're going to meet, so we, they probably, some of the partners in the following, I think they're things. Help with the appropriations for that.
And depending on whether it is, you may not need free quotes or everything. Well, I think it's free is the recommended, but if there's some things that probably fall under a certain dollar amount that it might not. And for example, too, like Shane. A Scottville resident, and we we know Prankin and stuff, he always says that like, we could get other quotes, but. Or if somebody did. Be changed. Yeah, somebody did a free good version of the math or whatever, then we just go with them. So it might not be as bad.
Also, everything we need to cover, we're under, we're below those minimums, but that's practice.
That is best practice, yes.
I have it penciled in, and I'll be with you in Meredith tomorrow around eight fifteen.
If he gets back to the staff next.
Well, we need to do on item B.
Yep.
No, that's one of them.
Oh, and one last thing.
I was thinking that with the, in your work session, you kind of related, you said that you got to do that. And I don't think we should have to do that picture with people donating to community not profits. I think it's a nice.
Issue.
Yeah, but but I'm thinking, we really need to look at, you know, who we're going to be giving to and maybe divvy it out, and maybe big terms giving it, if we're going to do it. I mean, I think we don't have any criteria per se for who we could give it to. And and I think there's a lot of needy organizations we could maybe share it out to. But and the other thing is, I think we could do some fundraisers, sort of support some fundraisers for the ones we don't give it to. But that that's a that's a challenging one, because there's.
But you're talking for next year.
Well, no, we're talking this year. You know, we're supposed to give out some, I was supposed to give out to the three thousand dollars. So I'm talking this year, so I mean, it's it's a symbolic and.
Did that line item in the budget that had not been.
Never get, never appear than off.
Not off.
So I haven't cut anything, more touches.
So we can bring that up, there's going to be a public. And maybe the public will say.
Oh, yeah, where do you want?
We don't.
Yeah.
Right to do that, so. But I mean, right now.
Set a list of the agencies in Scottville that could use them, or wanted to do that. Because I know there's some that would benefit from it, one of others, and some don't need it because they have deep pockets. But I I worry about, you know, just, you know, give it like the last year, just one organization and make it more than, you know, black to be, but I don't think that should be the rule of the town with our limited budget, you know.
I just don't think we can go through that process. It's not now done. We need to spend that.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about future, right?
For the future, maybe, but right now, this is the immediate.
We had a brief last year about going to where we've already. But that's what the last year, it's supposed to be quite different.
What we haven't talked about.
This year, at all. I'm referring to the trust budget, you know, starting to.
But even then, it's late to get the process in. It would have been better to talk about the process in the fall and then vote on the process, what that is. Where the next year's cycle, it's very late to talk about a process for this year or last year's budget.
Agreed.
What's our motion to consider following a public hearing on June seventeenth for supplemental appropriations?
Motion to consider a public hearing for supplemental appropriations on June seventeenth. Second.
Discussion on that motion. Uh, can you call the roll please now?
Alex?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion passes in the words.
IRB, it's also a calling for a public hearing on the proposed budget.
I move we call public hearing on June seventeenth for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five proposed budget.
Second, are you second to move? The movement second is a discussion on this. We're done now.
Alex?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Bill?
Shane? Yes.
Yes.
Let's take IRB, like we sort of presented, we're going to debate, let's let's talk about transit occupancy tax, or associate two motions on this, so we could go. Let's consider, let's consider the motion, calling for a public hearing on the transit occupancy tax question. Then we can discuss. Your motion?
I motion for the proposed ordinance of ending the transit occupancy tax.
One second. Second. Um, primary, you want to install background on this, is to what will happen if we don't pass the motion and what will happen if we do?
I am accounted for fifteen hundred in revenue with a, in the current budget. Sorry, in the current proposed budget for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, it includes an increase of one thousand five hundred based off of a point increase in transit occupancy tax. It was a recommendation coming out of credit services, and it matches the transit occupancy tax rate currently for Charlottesville.
That's the motion is all before, now we're open to the discussion.
Does it also match up with all the malls transit?
Have the malls lower.
Well, you should match up with Charlottesville. I think it's, yeah, well, I'll I'll just say, you know.
Believe we're matching treatment then, right? I can do a little bit of that.
It is, yeah, I think, I think Charlottesville is some, I think that was the idea, to keep up with Charlottesville as much as possible. Okay, now, um, so bring me up to see where did the idea come from? Well, did we come from, I think, because, well, well, one of the things my government should say, they looked at the, you probably need to max as much as you can with what we have built in already. And the idea is Charlottesville is probably closer to Scottville than Almont, because it's a tourist town. And they do it for tourism, just like, and I did that with the meal stacks too. A lot of the tourist towns, they get their funding from meal stacks and transit. And so that's the matter, so really, I think, comes from keeping up with Charlottesville.
Councilor Payton, Allison, Almorel increased next fiscal year from eight percent to eleven. So we would be on in models that also.
But the motion is not at half.
No, not.
Oh, it's nine? And the motion right now is just for a town, a public hearing, right? Yeah, so.
Purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments on the proposed increase from eight to now.
Well, we're going to, of course, we'll advertise that as usual, town, with the number of B and Bs that we have. All the owners and operators of these, they're all going to get worried that this might be coming up.
We have a list that Ms. Heinz created last summer, so we'll just use that if we want to do some proactive outreach.
They have the courtesy of no problem, because they made it so something we don't, yeah.
That should probably be loaded out before the budget, because we didn't pass that, that would change the whole budget scenario.
You would.
Well, the public hearing would.
Well, it would change the, it would change by one thousand five.
Yeah. It would be a different budget.
It would be a different budget.
Well, same with the meal stack.
A productive work session would try and case to your staff member what the budget would look like, and you could do it in in the same night. Last time we increased that, we had a motion on the budget and then a motion on the one. Last year, what, last year, when we increased two falls, it was different, it was separate.
But if that didn't happen, if we just take our annual growth.
It would just go down by sixty five.
So we'd still be okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. Well, I'm sorry, it doesn't have to do with the motion.
Any other comments on the occupancy tax increase from eight to nine? On roll please now.
Alex?
Yes.
Man?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Abby?
Yeah.
Mr. Passy?
I'm going to ask for a motion on, well, then we can have a discussion. Well, Mr. Hodgson's committee has suggested raising the meal tax to what?
To seven percent.
From six and a half to seven?
Yes. And we could kind of go with my, the rest of before we actually see if they want to.
So I will take your. Would anyone want to make a motion that we consider, okay, having a public hearing for the purpose of determining raising the meal tax six and a half to seven?
Second.
Second. Okay, so now you're tall.
Well, like I said, the government's recommended this because they felt they should get the massive tragedy, mass attack, and that's a meal. And, you know, there's been talk of a separate town property tax. And it felt like, before I feel too, we should exhaust all avenues we have for revenue. Because this has been a crazy, you know, a couple of crazy years with with budget. So the, I looked up, you know, and I talked to Papi about it, if we went from six and a half to seven percent, we would get twenty five thousand dollars more. We are a tourist town, that is our our major industry in town. And I looked at Virginia Beach, had a ten percent meal tax. Williamsburg, Richmond, and Charlottesville have seven percent. So, you know, it's something to consider, but I think, you know, the other thing I thought about is, you know, we could ask the Chamber of Commerce to get involved and see if they'd rather have a meal stack. Some of them would rather have a meal stack or a property tax, because a property tax, you know, if we ever went in that direction, would affect all the businesses and especially restaurants, or restaurants as well as just there. So, you know, if we raise it a half percent, or we should give twenty five thousand dollars, which is, you know, down from, down payment on at least star. And I just think that that we all want to make that sacrifice and, you know, and, you know, just talk to the, I wasn't, I wasn't real keen on it, but I don't want to hurt those, those, you know, restaurants. Because, but, you know, I went to Charlotte the other day, and I didn't think about, you know, I just. And you don't even think about what you're paying extra, but, you know, that's that's what drives our town, you know, and I think we're going to be getting some good money from some of the new restaurants in town.
I understand, I understand, I had a lot just mentioned tomorrow today, where, you know, you don't think about what food stocks and people want to eat so much. I just think it's, I just, with two new eating establishments in town, last time we adjusted the meal tax, we did it mid-year. And so the only thing I would say is that while it's a good idea, and we certainly use the revenue, let's wait till we're mid-year, and then we need to adjust it, we can adjust it, we can lower it up. If someone says you can't change.
And we can also direct there if I'm wrong, we could go back, I think, the last two tax increases were both meal tax.
Yeah.
And you know, they go on. And another thing, I mean, I agree with with most of what Neil said, also. They have brought a good point, I was sitting thinking the same thing, is give the two new establishments a chance to lead if we're going to see a boost in revenues. If they'll, if they're worth putting this a lot of, how do you just get a feel on?
And that's my only problem, where you got two branded businesses, all of a sudden you don't, you know, it's not, it's not going to. They, they could have the other back home. Saying, well, I can't come here anymore, it's just gotten too expensive. But like I said, if the five is, getting tons of money out of these two, then we go out to anything, but if the five needs to actually all six plus or less, we can have a public hearing, and we can do it, just like last time, we don't just put some last time. We'll have a public hearing on ways, meal times.
Yeah, a lot of restaurants are, and I'm not sure what the term for this is, I'll call, how do we have a problem that supplemental charges or several charges, reference charging, let's say, for gas or water, which, you know.
Yeah, they even charge you a credit card, you could be able to hold a set, but they don't give you discount or cash in a lot of places, some do.
But they're charging them that just to, to, you know, get by in a lot of places. And we have one restaurant here that's not doing as little as they used to. Or these other two thousand, so they're not as hard as they are.
So the answer, Mr. Payton, that we discussed earlier, including also, especially that we have a knowledge of. Also, we were going to keep a diligent eye on our meal stacks, that we must start rolling in this year, and then see how things are trending, to answer both of those questions, how are the new ones doing, how are the ones that are already established? Hopefully, it's trending. I I also anticipated some hole for other businesses in the purchase of the revenue, as I explained to you three last week, because I, I, I think it's more prudent to have a voting, as for our stats. So we'll go on until we start getting the forums back, I'll be sure. I'll be more confident about that.
And I'm a little uncomfortable saying anything about meal stacks versus financial income.
Meal stacks versus, uh, my in- income, you know. Real take that, so see, because. We increased this to the seven percent. And then next thing you know. We still need money and taxpayers say, well, you said it was just all this, you got this. Why not?
I've been offering. Alomoral's saying six percent.
Yeah, I always says, but.
So I have a quick question. I know for the transient occupancy tax. That was based on the increase, is our male's tax. Based on what it is now?
Yeah, yeah, so this year, the increase was that due to that two percent jump we had. I feel fairly comfortable about that and, um, that twenty five percent was the exact happens. It's just on top of whatever project.
You know, I was, I was going through some of these old fletches from other countries, meal stack and transit seat. And property tax can actually go down. It don't happen much, but it can, so, you know, if we pass it, we could always say, well, we're doing all right. Well, not, it probably wouldn't even say, hey.
I have a hard time believing that you would say, hey, let's make less money for the town. But, and why do we know that it gets, you know, tax raised, when I, when I motioned it, it was just to have a public hearing about it. But chances are, when it came to.
Let's go ahead.
So, uh, yeah, I'm just like to say it's even like it is, at least for the first next six months, then we can take a mid-course adjustment.
Okay, that's fine, then we wouldn't need the public hearing.
So much in our public hearing for, um, seventeen are raising, let's just say raising the meal's tax.
You can either remove it or we can.
Yeah, so you can either, what do you have a public hearing on this, where you can vote against it?
Did I make the motion? I knew I said it. I made the motion. I hereby revoke.
So like the. Work of, now, discussion of others, and we close, go out there and say no.
I think we got a good discussion.
You can make a motion, but the outcome, I make a motion that we. We at least have a motion to consider the, the meal's tax increase.
These are second to Mr. Higson's question.
Now, that being said, I think in fairness to all of. The restaurant owners in Scottville, if we're gonna be. Getting in touch with all the Airbnb owners to get, you know, to let them know we're gonna be having, because we should also get in touch with all their.
For the hearing, I want to say here, yes. Hold on, you have to hear them, hold on, I'm confused, if we're.
If you vote, if I hear Mr. Higson's motion for going to have a public hearing on the seventeen. We're going to use the meal's tax for now.
Yeah, I would, I think that's a challenge. Yeah, I mean, your proposal is actually. To have it, it has to be a proposal that's worked for raising and not helping back. Bad idea, that's.
So we have a motion in a second when we have it.
Any other comment, discussion?
Alex?
No.
Nathan?
No.
Meredith?
No.
No?
Yes.
Benny?
No.
Eddie?
I'm the same.
Bringing down.
But like I said, we'll, we'll leave here and they, they do something, we can certainly.
Okay, so then, next, when we start talking, look at next year, let's, let's. Won't forget the numbers in there, but. And to follow it up. Talking about it is fine, but you're also, that was a motion, like we could have passed and not have been.
It was a motion to talk.
Well, that wasn't.
The motion of a public. That's different than just talking.
Yeah, we can talk about. Well. Okay, so the conversation is there on the list, um, just. Stan, asking if there's anything else on anybody's mind, or the budget stuff that we need to talk about. Kind of not want me to judge. But I'd just like to see what the, get some sort of sense of what we spent, and what haven't spent this year, uh, other things that would be like. Like Chris Sacks.
So.
And the, you know, you know. Well, can you spend, uh, some of the things that, that aren't on lists of these things?
I forgot during my staff report, I'm gonna ask council to record this. Then I mean that we would delay other items that are priority, but, um. We presented, uh, this whole statement for February and when you take that home, you should be looking at it. And comparing it with sixty six percent, because you're two thirds of the way through fiscal year on that financial statement. Not only would it start it on March, so I hope by next month. Well, sooner, at least for me, for our appropriation to have a, a March interval in the ass. Uh, and then, and they give us a very close estimation, that's what I wanna use off of, uh, off of our, uh. Especially for our capital improvements, that I've been penciling through already and maybe next, I'll show you that tomorrow. We can use that with confidence to run, uh, quotes off of and be sure that we hit the right line on that. Our February, as I kind of anticipated, we've stayed on budget or under. Um, so we're tracking okay, but I'll replace a catch-up and I'll give you guys as soon as possible.
I was just, speaking of that, I don't, I don't, I mean, there'd be something that we build for, and also give you, you do that and have to spend some time discussing. Because I, I think it's something that's in a top plan for five years and I've seen a little graph of the, and that needs to be amended, I think, and. See. What we, what we can adjust with the capital.
I haven't presented.
Yeah.
The capital plan.
But we can wait on it.
Well, I, I was not left with the impression that it was ready, or council was ready for it. Um, but in the meantime, you, you have a budget for next year. Uh, prevented, proposed, that has happened for the current year. Uh, but.
But I'm talking about the CIP and the big.
Yeah, so that would be in the. You have a question?
I did, uh, now, you said at some point you were true of the numbers, you tried to give us a, a. Sort of summary, uh, of the budget plan versus the actuals. How close are we to doing that? Because this is a lot of detail to go through. I would just like the executive summary, at least to start with, to say we're on track or off track, you know. Red, yellow, green kind of thing by category level, right, that we have in the budget. If they were on track or off track, and then do what you do in the staff report, so, you know, here's the hiring. You ever spent here, we ever spent here, blah, blah, blah. Are we even close to getting it?
We just have to get plenty of people, we just have to aim for. So. That would be done, we need, like.
So when do you think we could have like a draft, you know, in front of us? By next year, okay, that would be great. I know you were working on it, but I know you have a lot of backlog to go through. So I don't wanna put pressure, but I think it would be very helpful, certainly to me, I know, um. Bill and Government Services have asked for that before too, so. Yeah, I think that would be helpful, then you can use this as a drill down, right, on what's been spent or what not, but at least it would say. If everything's green, I can help, they'll sleep okay.
Okay, anything else? Something made in, like, well, just maybe, and, um, if you comment, thoughts, and. What are your hopes for term?
So, second.
Second.
Thank you all.